Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for February 21st, 2023. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Voice?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud? Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Any changes to the agenda? All right. Seeing none of motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. That moves us right into public communications. We have three items under public communications this evening. The first one is public recognition, and I would like to call up Mr. Ainsworth Jackson, representing the YMCA Advisory Board, to fill us in on what's going on with the advisory board, introduce the folks that are here with you, and bring us up to speed.
Ma'am, again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak to you, the council members, about the YMCA. Again, newly formed YMCA board, seeing the YMCA officially, which you know, opened in 2019, closed down six months later. So officially, they've only been open roughly at two years thus far. So obviously, they're working through all the issues that were brought up as a result of COVID. So the members that we have right now, obviously, is Mr. Bill Voice, Bill Boyce, excuse me, Ms. Janet Hoffman, Kendrick Glover, Maria Jackson, and Dr. Veal. Again, they're all prospective leaders in their own professions, but also committed volunteers to this city that they love. Okay? Also, in addition, I want to raise awareness and garner your support, you know, as we try to recruit and retain partners, hint, hint, sponsors, donors, members, and volunteers, as well as trying to build a talented workforce within the Y. Because again, the Y provide is not just only a gym. It's a little more than just a gym. It's a community center, if you will. And it provides the gamut of wraparound services that kind of is an expansion or give you capacity and more capability in the social service programs that you provide within the city. All right. So any help that you all can give us, if it's even just assigning someone to the board, because we're also looking for, trying to recruit more board members, so we can do more. But someone from within the city that works for you, also, we'll gladly accept them as we try to solve the problems of today and hopefully prepare, you know, the younger kids for the world of tomorrow. Again, so again, thank you very much. I also want to highlight Ron. He's the executive director, came out of Hawaii, been with the YMCA now roughly over 30 years. And so he took on the role of trying to make this Y what it can be and realize the vision for the greater Seattle YMCA's. So if Ron would like to say a few words?
Put him on the spot. It's just been a great experience moving from Hawaii, have lived there all my life, coming to Kent. I got to say, Kent has been amazingly welcoming to me. Every person I meet that comes into the Y has just been such great people to talk with, to learn from. And I just want to say Kent is where I live and where I work. And I thought it very important that, you know, I live in the community that I want to, I want to build. And so the cause of the Y is to strengthen the foundations of community, and that's what, you know, we hope to do here in Kent. So any support we can get, I really appreciate. And if I haven't met you yet, please come by the Y. I'd love to give you a tour.
Thank you. Ron, we are so happy that you chose Kent. And I want to say to the board members, thank you for the work that you're doing. That statement that you made at the end about solving the problems of today and preparing our youth for the future, that is really powerful, something that I can, I think I can speak for everybody up here very supportive of. And we will absolutely do what we can to support and spread the word. And thank you for taking the time to come down tonight and highlight the great things that are happening. Council President?
Thank you. And really, Ron, you've done a phenomenal job since you have taken over and really been kind of keeping things together. Mr. Ainsworth, thank you for your leadership as a new chairperson. We really appreciate you. A different set of eyes are coming in. And I get Ron a hard time. He's the second person I know personally that moved from Hawaii and came to Kent and they love it. And the other one is that chief back there, right? So maybe you guys have something in common. I'm looking forward to going to Hawaii in June and spending weeks and weeks there. So but anyway, glad to have you here. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to community events. Council President, before you start, I do want to just very quickly, at about 7:15, you are going to see me get up and leave. I have been waiting online since 1:30 to testify on a bill in Olympia. It is now almost 7:15. Do not want to miss my chance. They said they'd be back at 7:15 to allow testimony, so I'm going to step out. Council President will take over the meeting at that point, and, and I will be back. But I didn't want it just to get up and leave and have somebody think it was because of something they said. So with that, Council President, you want to start us out with community events?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a couple of events going on at the Showware Center. One is the Thunderbird playing Portland on February 25th. And we got the legendary West featuring, featuring Ice Cube. Brennan's going to be there with Ice Cube, so we're looking forward to that. March 5th, we got the Thunderbirds playing Everett. March 18th and 19th, we got Tacoma Stars playing the Outlaws. March 31st, we got a Wiz Kids program. April 28th, the Awaken Music Festival. And then June 9th through 11th, Jurassic World Live Tour. So tickets go on sale on February 28th. So lots of things going on at Showware. So if you haven't seen an event there, I encourage you to go on their website and help support the city by attending one of their great events. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 4th, we have the Spring Recycling Event that is coming up. So you'll have a great opportunity to be able to get out and get some of those things that you've been having around your house, around your job that you want to get rid of. Great time to take those and have them recycled for free. And then we have our Spotlight Series. We have Matt Dussing Sinatra. That comes up on the 15th. And Ray on My Mind. So if you want to hear some good music, you're going to head on up to Kent Meridian. One is March 15th, the other one, March 25th. So Ray Charles, Frank Sinatra, their music lives on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Before I call the chief up for the public safety report, I do want to mention, we do not have an executive session tonight. Our chief administrative officer is out for some medical leave, and that is generally his job to make that comment. So I wanted to make sure we get that on the record. Next, we will move on to our public safety report. Chief Padilla, if you'd like to join us, that would be wonderful.
All right. Thank you.
And Mayor, I accidentally hit a button, so the videos went down, but the people online can see chief's presentation, and you can see the presentation from here. But I'm trying to get somebody to come help me turn the video on. Sorry.
Technical difficulties. No worries, Kim. I'll, I'll go through this, and if the PowerPoint coincides, that's great. If not, I think we'll, we'll get it here. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present this month's report. We want to start off with the legislative work that's going on and give an update on that. It's been a very active legislative session thus far. Mayor Ralph, I want to thank you. I know you're about to leave to go testify again. It seems like you've been living down there, and I just want to say thanks for the support on the many issues that are important to Kent and for taking the voice of Kent to Olympia. It's, there's a lot going on. I get to focus on the public safety priorities. And like I said, there's lots of interests before the city and different avenues, but I'm going to speak to the public safety issues that are, we're looking at. Our top four priorities for this year were the Blake Fix. Remember, that's the drug possession law. We're looking at Senate Bill 5536, police pursuits, which was House Bill 1363. And Kim, just for the record, they can't see any of the presentation, huh?
Not ready.
Okay. All right. No worries. Illegal street racing. Illegal street racing was also in the top four for us, and that's Senate Bill 5606. And then funding for hiring more police officers in the state, which was House Bill 1446. On the drug possession issue, I think you've heard me probably many times talk about the issues, the lethality and the related crimes that are coming with the open lawlessness and use of drugs. Our city has taken a good step forward in trying to address this with some of the low ordinances. But as we know, the major funding for, for the fixes like the services and treatment have to come at the state level, and they have to come through state law. So we're looking at that. It's been a sad year and a half and continuing on. The voluntary treatment plan where we offer treatment, but we can't compel anyone, it's not working, it's failing. Fentanyl continues to be the number three killer of adults in our country, and that number is climbing. And we talked about the corresponding crime and the resulting homelessness for a lot of people. And so we're looking for a process, as we've stated before, we support a process that kind of compels treatment. It will allow for officers to make an in custody arrest, not for the purpose of jailing, but for the purpose of connecting that person with the court process and treatment. And once a person completes treatment, gets the assistance they need, we're asking for that their records be wiped clean. And so that, the issue really is about compelling people to treatment because these drugs are super addictive. If they were easy to get off of, people would be doing it, but it's incredibly hard. On the next issue, in regards to the pursuit laws, this has been highly discussed, I think, in the media. I know the mayor was on testifying yesterday. I've testified on this issue. The bottom line is, right now, we have a current state of open lawlessness because people aren't stopping for the police. If you're a law-abiding person and you get pulled over, you stop and you get your ticket. If you're not, you just take off. And that is not a hyperbole. That is happening on almost a daily basis in our state. If I were to witness a domestic violence assault in our parking lot, right in front of me in full uniform, and the person who committed the assault, which is a mandatory arrest, was able to get in a car and take off right in front of me, I would not be able to pursue that person by law. And so we are asking and pleading for some relief in the legislature to assist us in doing the things that our community expects us to do. So that's ongoing. What we're asking is to reset the threshold for the authority to pursue from back to reasonable suspicion. It's that probable cause now. And to continue to have solid policies, restrictions by supervisors, and the other safeguards we think that need to be in place, so that these, we're not looking to get into a lot of pursuits. But if criminals know that they're not going to be chased, they're going to commit more crimes. And that's just human nature. If you're wondering, if you watch the news reports and you see a lot of these trucks smashing in the buildings, you see more and more of that ATM and all that, well, that's a simple reason for that. If we show up and they're in a car and they drive away, we cannot chase them. So there's what you have. Illegal street racing, I've talked about this quite a bit as well. We're supporting legislation that's going to help us go after the organizers predominantly. There were some jurisdictional issues because a lot of these, these races are organized via internet, social media. And so we, the law that we're supporting would allow us to prosecute regardless of where they commit the crime in the state. That'll be helpful. It also gives the officers the authority impound vehicles. What happens sometimes is we arrest somebody for racing on Friday, they get out of jail Friday night, and they have their car back to race on Saturday. So impound is an important issue. And then ultimately, we want to address the repeat offenders. If you're a repeat offender, we're asking for the legislation to allow us to seize and eventually forfeit the vehicle if they're convicted of the crime. So that's where we're looking at that. And then last but not least, and this bill did not survive the first cut, so we'll see what we have to do to, to get this back for next year. But there was a bill that would recommend, would allow cities and counties to retain one tenth of one percent of the sales tax that normally goes to the state. So not a new tax on our community members, it's existing tax to be held by the state for the purpose of hiring law enforcement officers. And so we, we're very much in support of that. I know it sounds, seems self-serving, but when I get to the staffing numbers, you'll see why that's important. And it's not only important for Kent. I think nearly 40 jurisdictions signed on in support of that bill that didn't make it out of committee. If you didn't know, Washington is dead last. Fifty-one out of 51 lowest officers per resident in the entire country, including Washington DC. We've been that way for 12 years. So you definitely could use some help with that. So there's that. Still no PowerPoint? Okay. Well, these data slides that I'm about to show you are going to be really interesting. But let's talk about staffing, and I'll condense it down. The good news continues to be that we stabilized the staffing like we reported about. The challenge that lies ahead is we're still understaffed, and we need to start looking at solutions. And the council, I know you've been very supportive of this. I know you're solution oriented, so I do want to put that out there. If there were slides available, what you would see is data that shows that we were near the bottom of per capita in the region for our comparable cities. And to get near average amongst our comparable cities, we would need to hire 29 new officers today. And so that's what we're looking at. The deficit's pretty large. We've had those numbers in 2018. We continue to have those numbers now. In fact, the, the gap has broadened just a little bit because some other cities have been able to fund some of their officer positions and add on. And so we need, so that's my, my discussion point. The impacts that we're seeing, if you go to our website and look at the Advanced Kent Dashboard, we're tracking our call response times, and they've gone up in the, in the tune of about 20% overall, up in terms of 2018 to now. That doesn't sound like a lot, but if you think about the measures we took in 2021 to kind of, kind of hold the line, we moved the 12-hour shifts. We consolidated all of our specialty community-based units into patrol because we needed call response. We drove probably 30% of our calls to mandatory e-reporting, and I will tell you, people don't like being told that a cop's not coming. Lots of complaints on that. And then we did, we stood up some non-traditional things where we're having people take phone reports on overtime, even from the residents at times, to cover the calls. So if we hadn't pulled all those pretty significant operational changes, I assure you, our call response times would be much higher. We don't have 2022 numbers yet, but I am told that they're, they're above what they were in 2021 already. So that's the impact we're seeing. And so, again, just ringing the bell on, on our need there. So thank you. Next up, next slide. And God, I had a great joke for this and everything. So if you could imagine, there'd be a big thing with the heart on it that says "Take Me Home" program. And my joke was going to be that this wasn't a new dating app started by the Kent Police Department. So there you go. We have launched, our community education unit has launched the Take Me Home program, and it's a great program intended to assist our vulnerable adults and children. As you know, periodically, we have people that walk away from their service providers, get lost, get disoriented. Thankfully, most of those, the vast majority of those situations are resolved. We locate the person and we get them back to their families. But that's not always the case. So what this program does is it allows us, it's a subscription, it's free, go to our website, it allows caretakers to put in photographs and critical information that we're going to need should their vulnerable adult go missing or youth. And what this does for us is that when we get alerted that there's someone missing, the response time to putting that information out to the community is, is pretty quick. It's very useful. It's completely voluntary, like I said, and this is a national program that we've, we've launched onto. It's had success in a lot of other cities. So we're doing what we can with this. We want to make sure we keep our vulnerable population safe as possible. So that's a great, great program. Next up would be our Community Academy. Want to put in a plug for the upcoming session, which starts April 4th and runs through June, or June 6th. Classes are once a week in the evening from 6:30 to 9:00. And if you haven't seen this, get on our website, take a look. It's an incredible chance to see behind the scenes of what we do, right, a police department. Get in touch with instructions on special programs, specialized units. Some of the highlights are, you get to go through our use of force simulator, see what it's like to do a building search, traffic stops, see what it's like to, to have, interact with a canine, maybe on the sleeve, and see how that goes. I think the, the high point for most people is that at the end, when you graduate, you are allowed to go out on patrol with an officer for a ride along for one of the shifts. Very, very eye-opening and a great experience. We get a lot of great reviews from that. So registration is open now. Go to our website, click on our Community Education tab, and look for Community Academy and sign up. We do normally sell out on that, so you'll want to sign up soon. With that, Council President, that completes my report, unless there are questions.
Thank you, Chief. Team, are there any questions around the report you didn't see? Okay. Thanks a lot, Chief. Appreciate it. Hopefully, Kim, if we can send out that PowerPoint to the team, once we get up and running, that'd be great. A lot of good data in that, so we want to make sure to get an opportunity to see it. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five. And this is the mayor's report and the chief's administration report, along with the council member report. As we know, the chief administration report, we got that already through emails. That should be in your packet. And we'll start the council member report. And I'll start off by talking about, we had, in our Public Safety Operation Meeting today, we have adoption of a strategic plan that was sent to us by Urel and Maria. And they're really talking about the, the resolution around the City of Kent on Race and Equity Plan. I'm going to talk about just the area of focus. I'm going to read some of the things that we are really focusing on by the City of Kent. The City of Kent is committed to building an inclusive and well-informed community by working to improve communication about city services in a manner that is culturally relevant and equitable. The City of Kent is committed to providing a culturally relevant service and information in multiple languages. The City of Kent recruits and retains a talent workforce that increasingly reflects of the community we serve across all positions, from frontline staff, advisory board, and commissioned to executive leadership. The City of Kent will provide anti-racist and culturally relevant training, along with other topics that foster constructive communication and cross-cultural understanding for city representatives and the broader communication. And the City of Kent engages in relationship building through ongoing dialogue, outreach, and inclusion centered around racial equity in our approach. So those are what we adopted today from our team, and it was a, a great presentation. Also, and we had a IT work plan that the IT staff presented to us. And there's a lot of great automation have happened since 2017 with our IT department for bringing in new technology and making it easier for our staff and our directors. So I'm sure they can testify that some of the things that have been implemented have really made things a lot easier, as well as on our customer and our client outside who come in and use the, the city. We also, during our public workshop, we had two presentations. One was around the Solid Waste Team Cleanup. And wow, what a fantastic job that that team has done around cleaning up, working with a partnership around King County, some of the places that you may notice, there'd be a lot of cleaners around Benson Highway, Pacific Highway, Kent, Cayley, 212 and 196. And also, I have a partnership with the Uplift Program. We're going to clean up 420 bags of trash, roughly about 1,000 hours of work. We also have graffiti cleanup. That was 432 hours just last year alone, 87 work order. We have this group called Team Up to Clean Up. 237 volunteers, 206 bags of garbage, and 559 hours. And then we have the encampment cleanup. 87,187 pounds, which equates to 43 tons. It's amazing how much work that was done by this team here. And they already identified some 2023 camp that's already on the list to be cleaned up. So then also talked about, about the street. That's one thing that you can really get involved with. You can find a location with the city, and you can dock that street, and you and your team are responsible for getting that clean. I do want to say, you know, for, you know, we drive around and we see garbage in, in the city, you know, that belongs to all of us, right? You know, we as a city, yes, we have a staff, and we try to get it cleaned up, but it's based on what I just told you. There's just a tremendous amount of garbage that people just dump anywhere throughout the city. And I would encourage all of us to get involved. This is our city, and make sure we can do what we can and try to keep it clean. So I would encourage you to do that. And I think that's all I have. So I'm going to go to my council member here and see what reports they have. And I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. We had our meeting on Valentine's Day, and we had a presentation from Lisa Mannion, King County Prosecuting Attorney, and she introduced the new gen- County Prosecuting Attorney, and she introduced the new gender-based violence unit that she is forming under the Criminal Division of King County Prosecutor's Office. That's very, I think, a good step. We also had presentations from Doris O'Neil and nature Carter from YWCA on various gender-based violence programs they have through YWCA. And we also had another presentation on operations, family court operations at King County. So I have all those slide notes, and I can forward that to the council, and you can read that on your pleasure. And I also serve on Growth Management Planning Council with King County and Puget Sound Cleaning Agency Advisory Council. I will now be meeting, I will be out of town for a bit, so I will not be attending those, well, Growth Management Planning Council will be meeting when I get back. And Puget Sound Cleaning Agency Advisory Council, I will miss one meeting, so I will report on that whenever I get from the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a safe trip. Council Member Malorme.
Council President, I do not have any reports this week.
Thank you. And Council Member Trautner.
Thank you, Council President. I am Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We met on Monday, February 13th. We have two things that are on consent tonight. The first is the Authorization for Wagner Architects and Planners on the Keyhawk Design. The other is the amendments to the 2021 countywide planning policy. And then we also heard from Bill Ellis on an update for opportunities for small businesses and cultural communities organizations for grant applications. And then he also reviewed some of the findings of the commercial affordability work that's being done by the National Council for Community Development, also known as the NDC, and he is going to bring that back to committee and then to the council with some more information as he gathers that. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee, we met on Wednesday, the 15th. We voted on our work plan for 2023. And then we also had a discussion on Metro's Connects funding gap. So as you can imagine, there's a lot of projects coming from Metro in our own community, we have seen routes being cut, we're hoping to have those implemented, we have the Rapid Ride coming to Kent, and so there's a lot of concerns about Metro paying for all of these different projects. So looking at different opportunities to fill that gap. And then I'm also on the Regional Fire Authority with Council President Weiss and Council Member Thomas. We had our meeting on the 15th, where we closed the hearing for the benefit charge. And then we also had a really great story by Chief Tyreman, and I don't think that I'll be able to tell it as well as he did, but as you can recall, council voted on an agreement between the police department and the RFA at our meeting at the end of January. And that, that agreement is for the two departments to work together with a co-responder model. And that program has been implemented, and on the first day of implementation, within the first half an hour, there was a call by a gentleman who is a retired vet, and he needed services, so our care unit responded, and we're able to start getting to work at providing him with some different services and opportunities. So very proud of that decision that we made, and as you can see, I think it's going to be a really great program. And hopefully, we'll get to have more stories about that come before us in our council. And then lastly, the RFA had a promotion on Thursday, the 16th. We celebrated the retirement of our chief, Chief Matt Morris, who has spent five years with the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, and actually 33 years in fire service. So we celebrated his retirement and also the promotion of our new chief, Brian Carson. And he took over right away, and looking forward to having him as the new chief of the organization. Council President, that is all I have. Thank you.
That's a lot. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Thank you. Council Member Fincher.
Thank you very much, Council President. Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee and Public Works met prior to the last meeting, so I have nothing new to report from them. Arts Commission, we have discussed our new five-year arts plan, we're working on that, and the Vienna Boys Choir, Music of James Taylor, as I mentioned earlier, we have Music of Ray Charles. There's a wide variety and a wide amount of talent that is represented in our Spotlight Series. So we've already started working on the coming season, and just want to remind people that that's out there. And then for King Conservation District, voting has closed at the end of the month, we will know who the new supervisor is. And we also looked at the 2023 priority projects. So we're in the process of setting those for our new, for the new year, and looking toward the next ILA, the next five-year ILA at the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that kind of ends our report here. And that's the gentle item is a public hearing. We don't, can we have any public hearing? No, we don't have a public hearing. Number seven, public comments, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Do not have any public comments. And our next item would be the consent calendar, consent items, item that have came out of committee that was unanimously, and we have them on our consent calendar tonight, item A through K, and that's for a motion.
Council President, I move to approve items A through K on the consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
At two seconds, all right, good. Got a motion in second, any discussion on the consent calendar? CNN, all in favor, say goodbye, saying aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? Let the record show you now, it's passed. We're going to move on to item number nine, other business. We don't have any other business. Out of 10, no bids? Item number 11, is there a session? Yes, Council Member, please.
I was just going to add, since Council Member Micho is not here, the emergency cold weather shelter, severe cold weather shelter, will be opening tomorrow night and the following night. So Wednesday and Thursday, that'll be opening at Holy Spirit. So if you know anybody in need of a place to stay and stay warm, that's Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you, Council Member Fincher, I appreciate that. That's good. 10, we have no bids. Item 11, no executive session. Item number 12, we are adjourned. Thank you.